Main street, yeah, that's one in particular, uh, this is uh, George's house, which I had to sold that house to George. So, kind of know the lay of the land and uh, just basically want to put a smaller uh, frame style home. It's not gonna be a manufactured home or modular, it's gonna be a stick frame home. And I've talked to a local builder, and Mr. Dooley, they keep in touch with it, because I'm still working. At seventy years old, I'm still working two full-time jobs. You'll have to put me in the insane asylum after this. Yeah, I've worked there, and I'm the building inspector for state of Virginia, so I go down to state capitol every day.
So we know you do this properly?
Well, Mr. Mr. Dooley can do it properly. So that's basically what I'm asking this question.
Would this be like two beds in one bath, or?
I hope I can squeeze, depending on the footprint that y'all allow me to put two baths. I've had some rentals before with one bath, and when something happens to one, it's like a eleven o'clock call at night, we'll do something. Where two, it's a ten o'clock in the morning call, so I'm hoping I'll get by with two. Depending on what y'all allow me to put on the thing. My proposal, uh, kind of made a rough draft of the footprint. I had a, uh, Todd leaning warfare. We sort of uh, surveyed it and uh, wanted to verify all the dimensions. Because it was a little bit of ambiguous language and some of those, but this is kind of what I hit you. Uh, this was only a lot, I think y'all might have, uh, yeah, I think y'all might have a.
Okay.
Uh, a copy of the newer survey, did they get that in their package? Cause I knew I.
I don't think it was in the packet, is it?
There is a survey in the package.
Okay. Is that the original survey, not the new thing that Todd had done? I will add, so you guys know that the property is fifty feet in width. And I can't say we set a precedent, but I think the the border zoning appeals does want to hear matters on lots of that size. The typical lot in that area is is, it would be larger than the fifty feet. So if we follow the fifteen percent setback rule, which is standard for residential, okay, fifteen percent of the road frontage, that would mean that he would have a twenty foot wide house, so it, and I explained to Owen after tonight, depending on what your disposition of the matter is, uh, he does need to go to borders zoning appeals, just like we've been one on College Avenue, and I think there was another one on Luke Street that were recently approved, that uh, Mr. Hardy will still need to go to BZA to discuss the side setbacks and uh.
So are the setbacks the same in general business?
Mm-hmm, for residential.
Alright, thank you.
I guess with a lot, he'd have to do it where normally you had the wide part on the front, narrow part be on the front.
It may have to be a little narrower than maybe even what Owen's showing you, but uh, uh, those two cases were approved. And if I'm not mistaken, they were on fifty foot lots, so fifteen percent of fifty foot lots would be seven and a half feet. And I think if I'm not mistaken on college, they permitted it with seven and a half on one side and additional, it was as much as sixteen feet on the other side, is that right?
We shifted the uh, the one on Luke Street was more uniform to what.
Right.
What we were expecting where, forgive me, I don't have my digits in front of me, but where we kept the setbacks like they would be for an eighty foot lot.
Mm-hmm.
And just applied that to a fifty foot lot, so it did make for a narrow place for a house. The one on college, we, the overall setbacks, if you added them together on each side, were equal to that, that same number. But we shifted it over, being that there was an alley there to give space to the residents next to it.
So the standard for an eighty foot lot, which is a standard residential lot these days, uh, would be eighty foot on the street frontage, which is twelve feet on each side. It's a twenty-four total in the setbacks. But on college, they decreased it from twelve on one side and increased it on the side towards the Udlies house. But it still equaled twenty-four feet total.
This is similar though, however, to the homes in the neighborhood?
I think it's gonna look a whole lot like the one next door, probably.
How about, how about behind it, is it?
Well, it's similar.
Kind of uh, you know, if you ever get out there, hold on, walk on it and look, because the houses behind it on Center Street, some of them, I've been a building inspector, state building code, got it like anything less than ten feet between houses.
Mm-hmm.
For fire, uh, concern, so I think a couple of those ones on Center Street are really kind of pushing that.
Big houses on little lots, cause they're all fifty foot, aren't they? There's a big brick home on Center Street, which would be directly behind this property. And if you remember Gilbert Ruffin, I don't know if you guys remember that matter that came to us some six, seven years ago.
But that was rezoned because he was gonna build some apartments, and that is adjacent or almost adjacent to Owen's lot over there. If you remember, he was gonna build some three level apartment building, went through zoning, and that was rezoned to R three again in Gilbert Ruffin, including the frontage on Main Street, and then Owen is just north of that.
At any rate, this is a less intensive usage than would otherwise be permitted, so I have, I have no problem.
I don't see the usage being straight up commercial.
Yeah.
You know, anytime soon.
And we, and we sent out letters, I sent out letters to the adjoining property owners, and I believe you are.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you in a smaller house right there?
Right next door, yes, ma'am.
And you don't have any concerns or?
No, I was, I've, I've, really my concerns lie with the setback, you know, obviously, and how, how far apart and just that's, that we, we just discussed about the drainage, and that's my biggest concern.
The file setback, oh, being border zoning appeal.
Right, so I just, that's, that's really, I was just gonna catch him while he gets.
And you will, and you will get another round of letters, um, for the, for the council, and you'll get another round of letters for the board of zoning appeals when they need, so.
For the, very.
Okay, our friend Owen gets to come back two more times. Or fair enough.
I think I know a way I could save him that, though. I said, I know a way I could save him.
Okay, well, it's. Yeah, this usage doesn't cause me any heartburn, and I think would be an appropriate use of the properties.
Well, I will give you. If you remember Eric.
Yeah.
Came to us some time ago to get uh, duplexes included as a conditional use in the business general district behind Walmart. So we did add two family, not too terribly long ago, it was more intensive.
So his, it, his bigger hurdles will be with the, the board of zoning appeals.
Correct, yep, and the setback should be dealt with by him.
Alright, uh, anybody else care to comment? Okay. And then we will shall close the public hearing.
I will, if I.
Any comp, additional comments, questions from the commission, or would you, somebody like to make a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Thank you all.
Step one completed.
Thank you all. I do think, just in fairness to everybody, know that Owen designed, probably gonna follow power a little bit to BZA. You got thirty-five, four foot wide lots, so that would only allow deep foot on the side setbacks. So I think we probably are gonna see a narrower home and deeper.
That's what, that's what I was getting at on my own.
I think that you wind up seeing something like that.
And that was the, the gentleman with him was a property owner directly next door.
George, he owns that five nineteen, which is a little.
I figured the BZA would be a little, have a little bit more to say about it than us.
Unless he absolutely doesn't care at all.
Yeah, he bought it from Owen. Owen built that little house next door and sold it to George years ago. Alright.
So our next item on the agenda would be the, would we address the text amendment? Okay, so, alright.
This is a two-part request, uh, from Judy Bennett, uh, for Jan's resident.
Have to be adjusted to one of two things. In our definition, if you have adult care facility, or it could be a group home. But the group home, and the purpose of my phone call to you last week was, who is the regulating agency that inspects in the social services, correct? A group home is inspected by a department of behavioral health, okay? So, based on the information we have in our ordinance, an adult care facility is the correct terminology of what they say.
I will go very quickly and let you know exactly what the ordinance says as far as adult care facility. Is it? Okay. Mine didn't make it apparently. Oh, there it is, excuse me, it's on the front one. Okay, assisted living facility, the congregate residential setting licensed by the appropriate agency that provides and coordinates personal and healthcare services, twenty-four hour supervision. Do you have a staffer there twenty-four seven?
Yes, sir.
Alright, um, and assistance scheduled and unscheduled for the maintenance or care of adults aged, infirm, or disabled, and who are cared for in a primary residential setting. The following are not considered assisted living. A facility or portion of a facility licensed by the state's board of health, that's not the case here, we're social services, okay? Or behavioral health, because remember, that's a group home then, if those are their regulating agencies. The home or residence of an individual cares for or maintains persons related to him by blood or marriage, and that's not the case, these are, these are clients, not family members. Any housing project for persons sixty-two years of age or older. Well, there are people there that are under sixty-two years of age, okay, so that is not that applicable. A facility in which not more than eight, and that is where the single family definition comes in, okay? So it is a assisted living request, because it's not governed by behavioral health of the health department. It accepts people under the age of sixty-two. Uh, these people are not specific to being blood or marriage related, and it's more than eight people, okay? So the request is to, this first request, the first public hearing, is to modify the town's ordinance to allow assisted living facilities as a conditional use in the R two district.
Right now, it is not included in the R two district.
I have a question.
As it's used by right or a conditional use, and the green area is your R two, just so you know. And it's a predominance of the area of the town.
I have a question. Okay, uh, she's asking for us to raise it from eight to twelve.
Well, I, this doesn't have a limit on it, but that can be a condition in the conditional use permit. So that wouldn't be handled in the text amendment, but when you do a condition, because she has to apply for the permit. Once you modify or agree to modify, the order council agrees to modify, and her request can have a series of conditions, and that's where you can cap the number. Because right now, the definition does not cap the number of people. Remember, we had Clays, and that was an assisted living facility. And they had, I would say thirty-five.
Six to five.
How many?
Six to five.
It must have been double bunk.
Yeah.
There's thirty, thirty-five rooms of this, so they must have been double bunking them over there or something.
Let me ask you another question.
There's a lot of people up there.
Is, if, if, to say we were to approve this, is there an inspection process before that this can happen?
Not by zoning now, but if that's something you would like to see as part of the approval process, like a building official going through it and all that sort of thing? I think you can request that prior to your recommendation, so you know where you stand on things. And I don't think an unreasonable request certainly, and uh, something that Judy, obviously, because the property would have to agree to let them own the property.
Would you agree to that?
Having the building official do an inspection of the building, okay?
Yeah.
So, is this, I'm trying to get my terminology correct, so we've plucked between adult care and assisted living? Are those two synonyms, or are those two different regulatory things?
Well, I think assisted living is the, is the formal term.
Okay.
Is the formal terminology that we use. Adult care, I think, uh, I'll go back to the definitions, because I don't know it by heart.
He advertised it as assisted living.
Assisted living, yeah. Adult care facility is an agency, organization, or individual providing daytime, daytime care. That's the difference. This is twenty-four seven, okay, that's why it's not an adult care facility. Because adult care would be like adult daycare, when you drop grandma off and they hang out, or if you just have a day program for somebody. Adult care facilities do not include the residential component, okay?
But we do have the authority to, if, if, if the board approved it. To do the inspection process.
Well, I think it'd need to be a, we can do that prior to your approval, just so you know what you're voting on, okay? You know what the condition of the structure is, and is it, is it adequate for twelve by building code? That may be something too, I don't know the answer to that. Social services has been inspecting it, and she's been operating under social services license. So the building code inspection will be different, how many square feet per resident are required? Uh, are all the necessary smoke alarms, all the necessary uh, fire exit signs, and all those kinds of things in place, so.
You'd expect a fire marshal every year.
Fire marshal, okay, so you are getting an inspection by fire marshal. Do you have a report? Do you have anything in writing from him?
Oh, yeah.
If you could provide that, I think it'd be helpful to the, to the.
Particularly in light of what has gone on in Philadelphia, and other places recently, you know.
How horrible would it be if you guys approved something, and then a week later, the place gets on fire?
Correct.
No, not wishing you ill, but uh.
Yeah, I haven't got it, but this, I just shared this with him, but it's called last year, yeah, four years.
We just gotta make sure that we're, we're compliant.
Let me ask this. If we go, if we do this, I'm assuming that this type of facility could put it, be put anywhere in the R two district.
As a conditional.
Not with, as a conditional use, they would have to come here first.
That's correct, but we've also set a precedent.
You have set a precedent, so.
We've also set a precedent that what is the difference between twelve and twenty? In other words, what I'm getting at is, the state right now says eight.
It's mandated, you gotta permit it. Correct.
Mandated, you got a permit at eight. What keeps somebody from coming back and saying, fine, we want the same thing, we either want fourteen, or we want twenty? In other words, you've got to set some standard somewhere.
Maybe the definition can include then, the text amendment could include not to exceed two.
Well, what?
I would probably need to re-advertise that.
What about not to?
Subsequent change.
What about not to exceed eight, which is the state right now?
That's already in place, that's already in place.
That's correct, but why, why does the state say eight?
I guess, I'll be honest with you, I think, I think, and I'm telling you what I think is, years ago, many of the localities started seeing these kinds of facilities pop up, group homes and things like that, and tried very hard to free zoning that wouldn't permit it. And I think the state said, no, because we're a dealer role state, we follow what the state tells us. I think they set the, the term, why eight? I guess that was the number that they picked after negotiating and general assembly committee, perhaps, and uh, but that's the figure the state says is a single family home.
And I guess my other question is, in all, if you take, if we grant twelve, and this is sort of after the fact, we're granting twelve. There again, what, what stops somebody else from coming in and saying, we either want the same thing, because you've set a precedent, or we want twenty?
We, well, we can set a cap, but we would have to, but we're gonna set a, we'd have to set.
Text amendment, if you wanna defend it, so somebody's looking on the internet and seeing what is permitted.
Right.
And seeing what assisted living facility says.
Right.
In the R two district, the text amendment said not to exceed twelve, that's the way to do it, instead of just making a.
Right.
And they have four more than they're supposed to.
My, my feeling is that this is something that, once you do it, you pretty well have done it. And if you set a precedent, we've done this before, where we've done some special conditional things that I always thought were setting a precedent that probably shouldn't be set. Because once it's done, the next person that comes in will refer back to this and said, well, you did it in this instance. You should do it for me, and I understand that philosophy. And right now, the state has for some reason come up with eight, I'm assuming they've come up with that number, because that's, that is a number they think is somewhat manageable. And I'm gonna have a tough time voting to do this above that eight figure.
You wanna open the public hearing?
Yes.
And then you can come speak if you like, would you like to speak at the microphone?
No, sir.
Nope, okay. I don't think there's anybody else heard him in the room here, so.
Okay, we're, we're opening the public hearing regarding the text amendment to the Blackstone zoning, zoning ordinance regarding assisted living facilities as a conditional use in the R two district. Alright, man, let's see.
If the text amendment is not approved, then the conditional use permit request is muted.
So this property, I don't, um, Mr. Nash, I see you looking over there, it's, it's directly behind the extra parking lot where Greens is, Green Automotive.
On High Street, uh, just north of Dillon Avenue, some of these lots are here. The ones that are half, and the reason I found out, in all honesty, wasn't Judy was hiding anything. She asked me about expanding, and I asked her how many, and she was very forthright and told me, at the time, you had eleven. And I think she told Mr. Miller and I the other day when we were visiting, whether, if she's as many as twelve, because he's half lots.
So our concern is, in the whole, entire R two district, not speaking of this property itself, is that if we make it twelve, that becomes the de facto amount of people that can be.
You are not obligated to approve all the conditional use requests, but I do think if you turn one down, you need to have a justification of why that particular instance is not approved, whereas another one is approved.
Um, and that could, what could cause us to turn it down is the na, pressure from the neighbors, and, you know, wherever that may be.
It could be the neighbors or the.
Or could, we may think the house is on inappropriate. How, how would we legally justify that?
But I ask another question.
You know, could I ask another question? Can we table this and get the report, and then, get the inspection, and then come back?
Yeah, I mean, you can table stuff for ninety days, up to ninety days, after ninety days, state code says this is gonna automatically pass the council without a recommendation. So you've got ninety days to work on it.
I would tend to agree with Mr. Blocky, as you know, that, uh, you know, I, I look at my neighborhood there, I, I live in R two, and I wouldn't want a home next door to me that had, had twelve people, you know.
But you could have the eight.
Yeah.
I mean, somebody could come up and buy the house next to you, put eight in it.
But at least, at least there's some control there, you, you're talking about increasing what the state is requiring by fifty percent.
In that zoning district.
Yeah.
But it would be up to the owner to control that. You understand what I'm saying? Because whoever owns that house is responsible for their clients. So I don't see where raising it from eight to twelve would really be a matter, as long as we at this planning commission set forth the rules.
Alright, let me ask you a question around that. Why are we coming up with the number twelve anyway? Where, where?
Cause that's what's there now.
This was there.
But, but where I'm coming from with this is, that is not a number we're establishing, that's a number that's being presented after the fact. And I have a little difficulty dealing with something after the fact. In other words, I understand the problem.
And I don't remember, probably in between my turns here, when it started, and I don't know what the previous town manager, town council, told Judy about what she can and can't do.
Mr. Ellington.
Mr. Ellington, building.
Yes, sir.
Al Ellington.
Al Ellington, yeah.
Building official, but as far as zoning goes, I don't know if it was cap to date, and Judy didn't understand that, or didn't know that, um.
Didn't know.
Didn't know.
No, didn't know. Had the Mexican people next door to me, I used to be in that house too, they have four or six room, and they have nine, ten people. I mean, it's, it's adult and then kids, I mean teenager.
If you remember, there was a permit given out, and we did modify the permit when Madeline's house moved in next door.
Right.
Five years ago, and they've since closed down, but Madeline's house was located over there, and we did require them to do a, a.
But they had over, they had over eight people in there.
Yeah.
I think they probably did, yes, but they got a permit, kind of like what we're doing now, for a woman shelter, a shelter.
How many rooms are, are in your house?
Uh, it's a six room.
Six room, you have twelve, so you have twelve people in there now?
Yes, sir, it's two DSS approved, two for each room.
How, is there a minimum space requirement, like per occupant?
Yes, the, the, the DSS, when they come to give the license, they, um, they measure, make sure it's the size that they, it need to be by their policy and procedure.
You're, you're saying DSS, Department of Social Services, correct?
Yes, mhm.
Okay, and how many, do you, do you know the square footage of your house off the top of your head?
No, sir.
I can find it up the commissioner.
It's three room upstairs and three room downstairs.
Okay.
So I have a question just for clarification.
I know you've been itching to ask.
So R two is like the green section there, so just referring to, now she has a larger home, yes. But this means up to eight, so someone living on Grabot or Maven could do the same thing?
Up to eight?
Yeah. In one of the.
Anybody in Blackstone would do it.
In a Grabot or Maven home, you could have.
You can do it on Westwood Drive.
Right, but I'm saying, in the R two, you're asking for a conditional use, so a house the size of the Grabot home.
No, I don't think, I think there are.
Could, could they have up to twelve?
No, they can have up to eight, if they can meet whatever the standard.
But if we changed it to twelve, someone on Grabot could apply for this, and have twelve people.
Could apply, could apply. I don't think that the house would be big enough for that.
Right, but I'm just, so it doesn't matter about the square footage of a house, even if her house is large.
No, I think the building code does have a square footage requirement.
Okay.
Okay, she's a six bedroom.
Right, she's got, she's got a big home, but I'm saying, a smaller home like Grabot or Maven.
I don't think it would be practical to put eight people in that little house like that.
Correct.
And it would have to follow whatever the building code requirements are, square footage per.
And perhaps social services would not approve that.
I would think not, but I think that, uh, the request by Mr. Miller was to add another level, or another layer of, of understanding what's going on. Al Ellington was the one who approved it initially, but asking for the building official to go back through it, plus the information report from the fire marshal and take a look at it, but, uh, it's been inspected. Social services permitted it, so what she's doing now, I don't think is probably in violation of, of these kinds of things, but we'll get Al to go in there and make sure fire extinguishers and all those kinds of things are all present.
And the only reason I could have twelve, because DSS came up and approved it, I just wouldn't put twelve in there.
It was?
I said, the, the reason I have twelve, because DSS came and approved it.
Right.
They came and measured the room and made sure that two people, two chairs, two person, yes.
So do you have twenty-four hour staff in there now?
Yes, sir, you can't leave them alone, they'll close you down.
Okay, do you have backup power for your facility?
Yes, sir.
You got a general?
All of that is required through, um, DSS.
So it sounds like she's got legitimate business, but we just got a zoning problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a zoning issue.
It's a zoning issue.
And I gave Judy a copy, we had asked the police department to tell us, because we had a lot of calls at Clays, a lot of calls at Clays. Um, from what the police department put together, this is one of my calls in half two years. And some of them were silly stuff like assists, or general information, so they're not all criminal offenses, but uh, there've been some calls up there, but uh, of that forty-six, I don't know the exact number, but uh.
We had a plan there, but she, uh.
Have been criminal type things that go on, but uh.
How long have?
I can tell you, we really struggled with Clays for a long time over there, that was a toughie.
How long have you had?
RN, or what?
RN, LPN, and MedTech, which is licensed, just to give the medication in the facility.
And I will tell you, I didn't find out about this because of a complaint. Judy self-reported, she called me about some additions and increasing and purchasing some property, so it wasn't as though she was under the radar, or, or ducking the radar, um.
That's when I knew that, you know.
But there's been some question, how long has it been going on? I looked back in my files, and the first contact communications we had was about in August last year. Uh, and this was gonna come to you sooner, but I think Judy had been out of town with some health issues, and so I waited till she got back to town.
The, the issue to me, it seems that, you know, how do we, once we, if we issue a conditional use permit for twelve, does that become the standard, twelve? Then we would have to issue a conditional use permit?
I don't think you have to issue any conditional.
Well, I mean, without.
You can have a reading. If you really turn one down, similar circumstances, you need to say, this is why.
Well, I, in that case, I'd wanna make sure that we frame our conditional use permits with a great degree of care, and so that we can differentiate, uh, requests that we don't think are appropriate.
Well, the other thing is, if you were gonna do this. Well, the other thing is, if you were gonna do this. This is more or less a business. This is no longer a residence if you do this. What you're allowing it is in a residential area. In other words, I look at this as a business. And I look at it as a pretty serious business. And I look at it in a residential area, not in a commercial area. I think it's, you almost need a separate area of the town, almost separate zoning, to take care of this. I think it's very difficult to say, fine, we can allow this in R two, all over town, wherever somebody wants to do a thing.
Well, you make a good point. Would it make more sense as a residential business district?
Is it, is it touching other general, other business districts?
It is, because it's backed up to. This is more of a residential business, and it backs up to BG. I don't think you're out of your way in maybe doing this as more of a rezoning to the residential business district.
Well, I'll say this. To me, that at least concludes this from just moving into a residential area.
Yep, makes sense. Not a bad idea.
Anybody's discretion, and I think at that point too, at least somebody couldn't come back and say, you did it this way for this person, and I want the same thing. Because I'll be very frank, I have a tough time if somebody comes back and says, as a matter of fairness, I want the same thing you did to somebody else, because I'm gonna say, do it, granted, because something's done, but if we change this, and get this in a position that we limit the number, but also change the zoning. I think that's a possibility.
So here's a thought, because. In that same RV district, residential business district, here, and a little bit here on Main Street, there's very few places that Dr. Prater is a residential business, if you remember, some of y'all guys may remember. Uh, we actually modified that one some years ago. That would allow a nursing home also in that district. Convalescent rest homes and nursing homes, of which this is a different definition. Okay. But if you read the use by rights in the RV, you're on to something here, and that's gonna get you out of that R two predicament, and narrow it down, but I will tell you this, if we change the zoning just on this one property, you can do that. I don't think you're out of your way, and it should, Business General right here behind it. Do we wanna address the entire block, or just leave it as that matter for now, and then deal with it?
I think we would deal with it as a case by case basis. And is there, if we... Is there, are there any other properties in R two that are doing some, similar to this, to your knowledge?
Well, the closest one was Clay's, but that's closed now.
So per Dillon Law, we, for the eight resident limit, is that is Dillon Law proceeding this for giving more than eight, or is it less than eight? You see what I'm trying to say?
The state mandates no less than eight. Be considered a single-family home, and anywhere a single-family home is used by right, is allowed to go in there.
Okay, so it's, so in other words, the state is protecting.
The state is protecting
Eight or less.
Property owners from, from us to say, we don't want any of these congregate-type living.
Okay.
Facility. And I'm sure people have adopted ordinance after ordinance, and somebody came back and made a complaint, that the state modified there. That may be the better way to do it.
I like the, I like the rezoning idea.
I, uh, that may make more sense.
But where, where, where her R two is, is more or less business anyway.
Right. Because you write about rights and everywhere.
That may be the better way to do it, and that way, you don't have seventy percent of the town coming back here, and I wanna be there.
Who would?
Where, so I don't know, picket court may not be appropriate in this spot.
Okay.
So if we rezoned.
Can we close the public hearing at this point? I would like to do that. Oh, hang on, hang. But, and then can we table this request?
And I can readvertise this as a conditional rezoning.
And then let's proceed to the rezoning.
You know, you, you have another meeting to come to. I think we're onto something that's gonna give them more peace of mind, and maybe get closer to what you want to do, okay?
Yes, I think we can accomplish what you want while achieving our goal of protecting the greater, uh, the greater R two district throughout the town.
Doesn't a conditional use permit in RB, or is it?
That's not gonna happen at all.
Okay.
Okay. So we may have to do a conditional rezoning, and then maybe text amendment as well, to, to make it work, but, uh. Or you can have a nursing home in that district, or you can have a rest home in that district.
So would we be able to set a resident limit in the residential business district for additional rezoning?
It's a conditional rezoning, there.
Yeah.
So we're proffered the same time we can.
I had to say question.
Twelve or weeks worth, I mean, obviously.
We do this as a conditional rezoning, so she can make some progress, and I'll walk you through all that. But then she can say, Capitad twelve, and then that permit will only have this one.
Can we go back to something that was mentioned earlier, about having, in the meantime, requesting an inspection? I think that you've mentioned.
Yeah, yeah.
You're okay with us having the building official come back to it back in a minute?
Is that all right?
And you've got a copy of the fire marshal.
The fire marshal.
You, you said you got a copy of that. She said she's got a copy of the fire marshal.
Okay, super. Yeah, provide it. Okay.
You got me. That's a great idea. I mean, that streamlines a little bit and gets it, so you don't have so much of town.
So do we, can we get a motion to table and just be on the safe side?
I'll motion to table.
Second, uh, okay.
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
Bear with us, I think.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we don't need to worry about the second public hearing at the time, and we will readvertise, because you have another month, and we'll have it three weeks, we'll have it on the evening. Bear with us, and it don't cost you no more, we don't show up.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Um, many storage warehouses, I wanted to touch on. I think Tommy has asked me a couple times, after Eric Nash's request about many stores. There's not a specific setback in the definition of many warehouses. Okay, and if you go to the Business General, I think Tommy was asking, well, how come in that particular instance with Eric, remember where he had the, uh, we gave him a permit to put the, uh, many storage buildings over there?
It hasn't been, council still had it.
Council's still gotta do it, but if you look at the BG, and you look at your setback requirements.
Y'all don't have it.
You have a thirty-foot setback. I'm just reading setback requirements. It has a setback on the district. What are the wellers over there? I think there are one. The side setback's fifty feet. You're correct, that was incorrect. You're two for two tonight. And I told you, everything else in BG, if it's another BG property, it's a butt's, the property line. And Tommy approached me at the store the other day, and I, and asked me, double-check on that one, and sure enough, it's a fifty-foot setback on a R one, on the side setback.
So will that be, y'all, y'all also made it another thirty feet, didn't you?
No, we didn't change it.
I thought, I thought y'all did change it.
No, what was agreed to, I think in that case, was he could, he'd have to put up a fence. The fence, he would have.
He's got to do the fence.
Oh, he did, it was another thirty feet, was it?
Yeah, that was a road. It wasn't a setback. He wanted to put a road beside that fence.
No, it was some.
Right, but the road doesn't count, it's the structure.
That's correct.
The structure itself has to be fifty feet off the property line on the weller side.
But I thought they did thirty feet too.
I'm looking at it right here. R one district from commercial to R one.
During the planning commission meeting, I thought that they did thirty feet, so would that be eighty feet?
No, 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 it can't exceed, it can't be more than fifty feet. Can't be more than fifty, so it's either thirty, if that's agreeable, to do it less, but that's really a variance issue, not a planning commission issue.
I don't think we got that information. Look, let me, can I ask one more question in regards to that? The road itself counts as part of the setback?
The road or parking lot can be in the setback, yes.
So a road.
Or a driveway, or anything like that, can be within the setback. The setback is strictly for structure. Okay. And that includes dog pins or anything like that. The setback is independent from a road, a driveway, a walkway, parking lot, any of those kinds of things.
So my question is, if the road is part of the setback, and you're gonna put a fence in, but you're gonna put a fence in, where?
I would think, myself, that he has to put the fence at the property line, and that would fall within the fifty feet. It's gotta be a six-foot impermeable planted hedge or a fence, okay? You can't plant pine trees from the Forester Department and, and meet the minimum. So the, the fence of the hedge would go at the property lot, and then you would go fifty feet back, before you can put the structure. You can have a driveway in there, you can have a parking lot in there, you can have, uh, those kinds of things. Now that, I'm, I, that's the setback's only applied to structure.
So it doesn't, the setback doesn't, this sounds a little crazy, I know, but setback doesn't apply to the fence, which is a structure.
It does not apply to structure. It does not apply to fence, because he can either put a hedge, he can choose to put bushes down, and that's.
The fence is actually the barrier itself.
He can do like, he could do like, uh, Duncan did, right?
Like he dug it?
Yeah.
That would be appropriate to fifty feet tall.
I see what you're saying there. You're saying that, just rewinding a little bit, that a dog pin would be a structure.
It is.
But a fence, which isn't a dog pin, is.
Well, we're requiring it at the property line. Our order says it shall be a fence.
That's the, that's the barrier, you know, the fence.
The barrier, word.
That makes sense.
Downing Tom. But you were right, there is a setback requirement in the BG, when it a butt resident. My mistake, and I shouldn't give you good information like that.
So does that need to go back to zone?
No, I just got, it does a roof. Eric, he just got a tall roof.
Okay, well, if he wants to.
If he wants to vary it, he can deal with it.
Gonna do his current plans? Do his current plans, uh, eat variants?
I haven't seen the plans, I don't know. I just know it's up to eighty intended many storage warehouses, but irregardless of what he plan on doing, he's gotta meet that fifty. That's not variable, unless you got that BG.
Yeah, I think as a matter of, that worried me, because it's a matter of, there again, a matter of precedent. If you had a commercial piece of property, you're budding a residential property. It may not sense not to have a reasonable setback there, when we have two residential properties, we require setbacks on butts.
There's zero setback when it's commercial and commercial.
Yes, commercial and commercial, nothing.
That makes sense.
I told you all wrong.
Anything further?
Well, good job, guys, that was planning.
All right.
Any questions about any of the building projects that's going on? You have any questions?
Anything you find notable?
I'd probably say brothers are done.
All right, okay.
Uh, nothing substantial or expansive. Down the end, odd that they had started some of their house down there. They did put up a bond for the roof paving portion, they did do, and uh, they put down stone, and they had it compaction tested, and our engineers said it met compaction test. And the digits look pretty good, and obviously, there's gonna be some touch-up over the winter and weather and color, so they do have one, um, missile line joint on the big culvert down towards the other culvert side, but they did put up a bond, and it is a bond that does not expire, which are nice, because you don't have to keep renewing them every year. So there are two foundations already put in over there. I haven't been down there since probably Thursday or Friday, so they may start framing it.
What about the name, um, and you said on that?
The name was a road. I, uh, don't have an answer back from Cory. I can't imagine they're gonna say no. But I talked to his superintendent, Jeff Binsmore, last week, and I said, hey, man, uh, what do y'all think about this name? Because I gotta start answering. Now that they've started, I gotta give them an address. What am I gonna have to, is it a burrow lane, what is, and they're agreeable, they're our headpin, and he said he had a meeting late last week and will let me down, and he gotta let me down. But, uh, I dare say, I dare say it'll be Rolling Acres, or Rolling Meadow, or whatever was suggested by Mr. York.
Any movement on the, on the property pass for you, Matt, on that?
Nothing, I haven't heard a thing, man, just, and I had a developer who was trying to work with Mr. Benito, and I ain't critical, I just haven't heard anything. Okay. All right.
Nothing. All right.
It is.
We shall adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you, Tommy, that was a good idea with it, R, changing that district.